All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the regular late meeting session of the Milford School Committee. Today is Thursday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV. Copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through Central Office. We have a handful of things on the agenda tonight after some time off, so we'll start with approval of minutes and I'm just taking one more note here. So we have five listed. I'm going to request that we pass over, I should say recommend that we pass over three. So we'll start, we'll start at the top with the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Any questions on that one to start? I see no questions. So I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the regular school committee meeting on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion by Megan. Second by Chris. All in favor? That is five unanimous and we have, sorry, not five unanimous, five in favor and we have Mr. Erickson and Ms. Rattick are stating because they are unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next seven minutes in the packet labeled June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This was a special meeting. Any comments on this one?
So it's correct in the minutes, but on the title it's incorrect. It was the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Okay, so did the agenda, I will update. Thank you for that. All right, any other thoughts on this?
Motion to approve the Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four remotely held meeting.
Thank you. Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. So the next minutes that we will vote on will be the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four executive session minutes. This vote is for the release, the minimum number of the. I'm going to motion to release these minutes. Motion by Michael. Second by Megan. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And my recommendation will be to pass over the January eighteenth executive session minutes, the February twenty-ninth executive session minutes, and the May second executive session minutes. All of these were scheduled for release, but the outcomes have not been completed, so I believe we should pass over these and wait. There's been no objections to that, so we will do so. Thank you very much. Next up is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anybody have anything there?
I've got one quick one. Just our, just a reminder, our summer meal program will run until August sixteenth. Free lunch will be served each day at Memorial Elementary School from eleven to twelve-thirty, Monday through Friday. Memorial is located at twelve Wallace Street in Milford. Please join us for lunch any weekday throughout the summer. We're also providing meals at a number of our programs that are running across the district this summer as well. So just a quick, quick plug for that.
Anything else? All right, moving on to the location of speed and I see no one here, so we can move on to agenda item four, which is the policy's first read. We have three listed. We have policy KF, use of school facility fees. Let's start with that one. It's been in the packet. I know that we had the opportunity to review it. Is there any questions, comments, thoughts, ideas on what happened with this policy? No. All right. The next policy outlined here is KF one, use of school facilities. Very similar. I'll just assume that nobody has anything unless you stop me. And the final one is KF two, regulations governing use of Milford Public Schools' facilities and field usage. So again, this is a first reason no vote is necessary. Just putting it out there. And we will discuss that, I'm sure, in a future meeting to finalize those policies. Onto the chairperson, general updates. So I only have one thing here. It's just a reminder from last meeting about the community use board. We have potentially a couple seats to fill on that board. So I'm just reminding again, anybody who's watching, that we're asking for additional applications and those appointments are to be made per our policy by September thirtieth. So if anybody's interested, please reach out to myself and Central Office. And I know Dr. McIntyre will be including this, this notice in the future updated law. Are we advertising that through like our school email and stuff?
Well, we're going to send that out in the next one. We don't send them as frequently in the summer, but probably next week. We'll probably send something out early.
All right, that's all I have for that. So we can skip ahead to the MHS MSBA school building project. The only update that I have in here was some information that was worked out earlier this week and Nina from the MSBA, it was that project coordinator reached out to schedule a project kickoff call. That's going to be this coming Monday. And between Michael and Dr. McIntyre and I, we discussed attendance on this. This is just going to be a review of the outline of deliverables that we've already had and we've already talked about for the last seven months. So I think it's the official kickoff, but it's also a reminder of this is what we told you guys. So as of now, Michael, Chris, and myself will attend with Dr. McIntyre and I believe Rick Filani and Mike Waller wanted to attend as well. Again, based on Nina's outline in her email, it's just a curious when all your stuff is due. I'm sure there's an opportunity for questions, but I know that Michael and Kevin have been in contact with her regularly already answering questions. So obviously, I think if more people want to be involved, you're welcome to gain that invitation. But I believe it's one o'clock, I believe?
Yeah, and just reach out to me if you're interested and I'll get you the invitation.
Okay. I know there was a building committee meeting tonight, so I don't know if one of you guys wanted to give any update, if there was one to just share, or is there anything to share?
Uh, went well. Yeah, we organized, we had some quick discussions, but yeah, nothing exciting to report.
Fantastic. Thank you. Agenda item seven, we're going so fast, I don't even have these.
Oh, I've got, I've got one quick update. If I can add to the.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Let me get back to my correct screen. So there's a, there's a draft you received on the Milford Public Schools' Facilities Maintenance Plan and Preventative Maintenance Program. We're not going to talk about that tonight because I think the subcommittee of the facility subcommittee is going to review it first. And then I'm going to ask for your feedback as well as the building committee's feedback before we, and they probably have a couple other iterations, but this is the, this is the first draft of that document. The other thing is, we're making incredible progress. We don't start the eligibility period, two-hundred-and-seventy-day period until August fifth. And we're probably, you know, three to four items are completely done and we've made significant progress on others. So we're in really, really good shape right now. That's the other question.
Excellent. Thank you. So in light of that, we will skip over agenda item seven and we'll move on to item eight, which is the Milford Public Schools' Strategic Plan.
All right. So you've, you've received several iterations of this, so I don't want to go line for line. But I want to just talk on the high-level strategic objectives and I'm happy to answer any questions. One, one thing that we're going to do as part of our leadership retreat, which I believe is August fourteenth and fifteenth, is we're going to set some targets both by district and by building for all of the strategic objectives that we have across the, across the plan. And remember, this is a three-year plan, so we're, we're certainly not going to do everything in the first year. The first strategic objective is teaching and learning and it's basically the, Milford Public School District is a learning organization that uses qualitative and quantitative data to make informed decisions about a curriculum, instruction, and assessment. The district reviews programming curriculum needs on a consistent and scheduled review cycle to meet the needs of students in the community. And there are five strategic goals underneath that. The second strategic objective is equity and access, where staff, students, and families partner to ensure all policies, programs, and systems provide students with equitable access and are free from bias. The district, again, analyzes data to adjust our practices, policies, structures, and systems to align with the Milford Public Schools' culturally responsive practices framework. Number three is social emotional learning, and these have all been pretty consistent throughout the last ten years in terms of big areas. The district supports the development of student-staff social emotional competencies, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Each school embeds social emotional learning into Student School Day, contributing to a positive school culture for staff and students in an environment where students and staff learn about and respect each other's cultural similarities and differences. Professional culture, which is objective four, creating a positive professional culture within schools and across the district is essential for fostering collaboration, boosting morale, and improving student outcomes. By building a culture of collaboration, communication, and respect, administrators and staff can work together to create positive and supportive, a positive and supportive environment that enhances teaching and learning for everyone involved. And this last one is new. It's facilities, finance, and resource management. And the reason we added this one is I think that the Milford High School Building Project is going to become, is such a big thing for us in terms of the work we do as a committee and the work we do as a school administration that we added this. But the MPS district collaborates with community members to ensure that all students and staff have updated resources in schools that support innovation while meeting the needs of all learners. And there's five strategic goals underneath there. There's also resources on the last page, and these are all different reports, programs, and resources that we've engaged in the last year or two that has helped inform this, this strategic plan. And again, very high level, but you guys have seen, I think, two or three versions of this at this point. And I'm happy to answer any questions in general.
Questions? Talk to Dr. McIntyre quickly. I know this is strategic plan, which is more like K to twelve. What did you say you were looking to do from a school-by-school basis?
So yeah, so in our leadership retreat, we are, one of the things we're focusing on is how are we going to implement this strategic plan? And so we have district things that we're going to be doing across schools, but there's also going to be school-specific things that are going to be done. They're going to vary a little bit, school to school, based on where they are in the process with these different strategic objectives.
Okay.
All right?
Anyone else? Megan?
Thanks. So Kevin, the school improvement plans for the incoming year that we just approved are already tied to these objectives. Is that right?
Correct.
So it was sort of like done in anticipation of these happening. Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
So these, the only, the only new strategic objective is the fifth one?
Yep.
And we just, we just added that because I think that's been a point of emphasis and it just, it just made sense.
And that would tie, I would guess, more to the kind of facility department goals as we think about next year?
I would say facilities, business department, as well as, you know, immediate construction budget.
Okay. I don't necessarily, I don't think it should be per se incorporated into this document, but I think the one thing that'd be helpful for me, at least personally, is sort of like, as we think about measuring success, so this is a three-year plan, like what looks different at the end of year three? Sort of like, just some additional kind of supporting documentation that talks to those measures of success? And then the only recommendation is I know, it looks like there's some minor changes to the core values, but otherwise it's really fundamentally the same, which I think is important. I know we really share this really broadly because it's incredibly important. It represents a district. It would be great to just get this some sort of formatting graphic attention if it's going to be a document that we look to blast all over. I think we had done that with.
Yeah, yeah. I can put that team from the high school.
Surely. We all have different skill sets, right?
They did a great job.
Yeah, no, exactly. So I just feel like if that's going to be something we're looking to publicize.
I'm not your info graphic guy.
Well, unfortunately, the graduate, right? Like it has kind of a really nice pictorial with it. That might be something that if we're going to.
Yeah, oh absolutely. That'd be a great project, maybe a kickoff year for me, one of the more advanced classes. To comment on your previous piece?
Yeah.
One of the things we're doing is we're going to try to set measures for each year at the leadership.
Okay. That would be really helpful.
So I think we'll be able to, we'll be able to share that, you know, we might have a first iteration and kind of refine them at our first meeting in September.
Gotcha. So come fall, we have the.
So September or October, I should have something for you.
Okay, that's super helpful.
But that's part of the, that's part of the plan and already part of the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? All right, so I was just taking notes. You may have just answered that question while I was not paying attention and writing instead. This is an overview. Is there a complete end-to-end final strategic plan coming that we would vote on?
So this would be it.
This would be it.
This would be it. We're going to have additional documentation each year for you.
Okay.
About the specific pieces like, let me go back to the plan. Like if you go to, what's the good objective, strategic objective one, teaching and learning?
Sure.
We're going to have like something, probably each year, maybe not for each strategic goal, but likely, like two out of three years, all students and, all staff and students access high-quality instructional materials. We're going to talk about how we're going to make that come alive each year. Into kind of Megan's point, how that's going to be, how that's going to be different at the end of a year or at the end of three years, because some of these are multi-year engagements.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so that question on my, my, my thought process there was leading into the next one, which is I want to know if the committee feels that this is an appropriate thing for us to vote on as almost solidifying this guide as something that, as we set goals with the superintendent and as they set goals with the staff and all the way down the line, that this is something that we'll be looking back on to balance everything we want to do off of this and, and all the way down. So any thoughts on that?
Yes, as a district-wide, I think we should. How you feel, Kevin?
I would, I would say vote for it.
Okay.
Or against it.
All right. As the case, I would certainly entertain a motion to accept the district strategic plan overview for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand, from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-seven.
So moved.
Motion by Michael.
And second.
Second by Brendan. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Matt, can I just add one additional follow-up item?
Yes, please.
So the equity and access, Kevin, talks about our school's culturally responsive practices framework. I don't know that this committee has looked at that, so just as a future.
I can, I can show that.
Agenda item.
Yeah, that's probably something I can just email out to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Culturally responsive framework, correct?
Yep.
All right. Agenda item nine is the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four superintendent summative evaluation. So I will present the ratings and a couple comments. Everybody's had this document. I apologize. I know they gave you basically twenty-four hours, but I took more days than I expected I was going to, and I'm sure Chris is going to laugh and Megan's going to laugh and John's going to laugh at that.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
But I appreciate.
Appreciate you doing it, Matt.
I appreciate everybody getting their.
I really appreciate him doing it.
I wanted to let you know that there were a couple minor adjustments to some of the wording that I used in the summative piece. I have that copy here. I did not send that to you. I will get that to everybody and that will be the final document of record. So with that said, I will jump right in. We skip down to page four. That's where I'm going to start because the rest of it is more of a informational piece for the public, for anyone who opens this up. So starting with goal one, which was strategic plan development, which is a district improvement goal. After collecting all the response from everybody, the final summative rating that was given was pretty much a tie on the progress end. So the, the final rating that I gave was that the committee believes the, that some progress, to significant progress, has been made in the development of the district strategic plan, which we obviously just heard about as being completed. Goal two, a student learning goal, is chronic absenteeism. Again, something that we've been battling for multiple years. The goal two final summative rating here had the committee leaning towards significant progress having been made. Again, the majority of the votes landed on progress, some on the some progress category, and a few more on the significant progress. Goal three, a district improvement, again, facilities. This one was a little bit easier. Goal three's summative rating had the committee believing significant progress has been made in improving the facilities department across the district. We'll go ahead to goal number four, which was a professional practice goal, superintendent leadership, excuse me. Goal four's rating had, again, a mix on the some and significant progress. Actually, all of the categories were, were marked off on this one as they, as they were in many of the other spots. And the committee believed in a summative rating that significant progress has been made in the superintendent's leadership. And goal five, which is literacy, also a student learning goal, and the, the majority rating here for the final summative rating had the committee believing some progress has been made in improving literacy across the district. I will pause there for a second if anybody has any comments, questions, anything to add? No? All right, so we'll move on to the standards. And then again, the standards are something that were pulled from the old DESI forum and we're still following their framework and their rubric. We're just using a different presentation method. So standard one is instructional leadership and there were some focus indicators that we used. When it came to that, the, the one that was used here to be, to be focused on was data-informed decision-making. And this was a unanimous decision by the committee to rate the superintendent performance as proficient here. And I'll just read, I'll try to pull some stuff out here without reading the entire thing, but some of the sentiments included Dr. McIntyre integrating data-informed decision-making across his objectives, evident in achievements such as the district strategic plan, reducing chronic absenteeism, and developing long-term facilities strategies through collaboration with external partners. The district values accurate data decision-making and invested in curriculum such as math enhancements, and it also aims to evolve the K through eight ELA curriculum based on forthcoming data. So Superintendent McIntyre is proficient in instructional leadership, contributing to the success in student preparation. There are some other comments in here. While we have a proficient rating that obviously we would all like to see move forward, and I know that the superintendent obviously agrees as well, that we're never really done achieving more. So some of the things that we would like to see, obviously, is a continued drive towards addressing literacy goals despite the budget constraints that were unfortunately presented to the district this year. Because obviously, improving literacy, especially at the K eight level, is, is critical importance and everybody's pretty focused on getting that going. So again, the committee was unanimous in giving a proficient rating for instructional leadership. Standard two, management and operations. The focus indicators used here were environment and scheduling and management information systems. So the ratings here across the board were a little mixed. We had ratings landing from unsatisfactory to proficient, with the majority, six out of seven, landing on needs improvement or proficient. So some comments, Dr. McIntyre has shown commendable efforts in managing the Milford Public School District, evident by advancements. And the district's strategic plans, stakeholder collaboration, and operational procedures. Work to address critical facility needs and support students, including homeless and immigrant populations underscores the district's commitment to student welfare and community support. Other concerns are certainly listed in here, including some challenges with persistent personnel management and some administration struggles that impacted operational effectiveness. Other worries surrounded the feeling that some of the policies and procedures are generally unorganized and feel as though they may be haphazardly created as they're done at different, different building levels. And there's, there's certainly a drive to try to standardize and formalize a bit more across the board, including creating a district-wide HR employee handbook. So in summary, the committee desires to see significant changes throughout the district in accountability and attention to detail. And again, a summative performance rating on this topic for management, management and operations landed on needs improvement. Standard three, family and community engagement. The majority on this landed with proficient, so the final summative performance rating was proficient. And again, just a couple quick notes, Dr. McIntyre has demonstrated good engagement with colleagues and community partners, fostering collaboration and support across the district. Efforts such as multilingual communication through various platforms, including events and translators, highlights a commitment to inclusivity and community involvement. However, the committee does believe that there are opportunities for improvement, particularly in enhancing two-way communication with families. And some of the concerns that were raised centered around effectiveness of leadership stemming from the engagements with feedback stating, stating a need for more decisive guidance and tangible outcomes from these interactions. So again, that was a rating of proficient for family and community engagement. Standard four, professional culture. DESI indicators used here are continuous learning and shared vision. Seventy-four percent, so I believe that was five of seven members voted proficient on that one. Dr. McIntyre has effectively fostered collaboration among colleagues throughout the district, demonstrating leadership in strategic planning and improvements in facilities management and chronic absenteeism. Commitment to enhancing literacy instruction for educators reflects a dedication to continuous staff development. And the, the committee also believed that the district's shared vision is well-understood and pursued across all schools, which was evident in the progress of goals outlined in the school improvement plans. So just a couple of other areas of improvement, of course, that were, that were noted here involved expanding educator-led communities, focusing on literacy instruction, especially given another year without a literacy curriculum at the K to five level, which again was due to, mostly due to budgetary concerns. While engagement is evident, outcomes don't always reflect the level of engagement, posing challenges in achieving top leadership results, while some believe there is a need for improvement. Again, a summative performance rating of proficient has been given. The final summative rating for Superintendent McIntyre for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four year was a proficient rating that was five of seven members giving proficient, one giving needs improvement, and one unsatisfactory. So I will read, I'll read this whole piece because I wrote it down and that's easier than me trying to find stuff to pull out of it. I can do that pretty quickly, I think. So, Dr. McIntyre has demonstrated significant progress and achievements in the past academic year, including the drafting of a strategic plan, acceptance into the MSBA program for Milford High School, improvements in facilities management, and expanding time on math instruction. These efforts reflect leadership and dedication to enhancing the educational environment and infrastructure. Additionally, the establishment of a new facilities department has notably improved operations efficiency and customer service expectations within the district, addressing longstanding maintenance issues. Still, challenges do remain, particularly in areas such as communication with families and addressing chronic absenteeism among EL students at the high school level. While the goal for FY twenty-five was to begin implementation of a new literacy curriculum K through eight, a price tag of up to eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars slowed much of the progress due to the budget directives across the town. Regardless, advancing literacy instruction across the board remains critically important and something the committee expects full focus on. There are concerns about the disconnect between the school committee's directives and the superintendent's implementation, with issues of oversight and misrepresentation of committee decisions highlighted. Clearer communication and more effective collaboration are needed to ensure alignment and accountability across the district. Overall, while Superintendent McIntyre has shown commitment and improvement in various aspects of district management, there is a consensus that ongoing efforts are needed to strengthen accountability, transparency, and responsiveness, striving for more tangible results. Focused areas going forward include continuing bolster, continued bolstering of literacy initiatives, addressing absenteeism effectively, and ensuring that all financial decisions are communicated thoroughly and accurately to the school committee for informed budgetary decisions. The committee acknowledges the superintendent's willingness to improve and anticipates continued progress in critical areas for the benefit of the Milford School community. And again, the school committee gives Dr. Kevin McIntyre a performance rating of proficient for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That is the end of my speech. Any comments, thoughts?
Again, thank you very much for putting everything together. Obviously, have done it myself. It's a lot of work to kind of summarize seven opinions. So I think you did a good job. I feel like, you know, what I had in my individual one falls into this summarization, so there's really no need to go through it from a point-to-point standpoint. Again, I just want to thank you for doing that and say that, again, that the points that I made throughout my individual evaluation were definitely captured within this document. So, thank you.
Nothing else? Megan?
I'll just add, certainly thanks, Matt, for putting it together. It was definitely a lot of work. And Kevin, certainly thank you for all the work that went into us being able to create this document. You know, I think particularly when we think about facilities and where we're headed with the high school building project, like it was a banner year in terms of the improvements that were made. And, you know, I'm pretty confident to say I think it's just the beginning and so exciting to see kind of where that progress will go. I also think there's, you know, the culture is just so critical. And so we're at a really unique time in terms of being able to really ensure that we kind of give that the attention it deserves as we have, you know, turnover in key positions. And so look forward to you continuing to kind of bolster that. I think you always do a good job when you're highlighting your achievements to commend kind of all of those that it took to make it happen. And so I think that really reflects well on the staff that, you know, reporting to you. So just wanted to commend you for that because I think it makes a big difference.
All right. Looks like we're good. So again, thank you for another year of service to this, this community and to this school district. And we look forward to another, as we roll on.
Excellent. I appreciate the feedback. And I do take it seriously, as you know.
All right. Onto agenda item ten, report, oh, sorry, I lied. I got to go back. I would like to take a vote to accept the superintendent's summative evaluation as the official document of record for his review.
So.
Motion by Michael. Second by Robin. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you for that. Now we can go on to number ten, which is a report of the superintendent of schools on hiring for the upcoming school year.
So, good news, bad news this year is we were hiring a lot fewer people because of the budget circumstances. You know, I think our plan was to hire significantly more folks until the chapter seven, nine came in, much differently than we anticipated. What I can say is we're probably much further along than we have been in the last four years in terms of hiring. I was going to give you a position-by-position piece because I asked each of the principals to give me an update of, but it's changed so much that I figured I'm not even going to do that because there's, there's been a bunch of people hired. But we're, we're finalizing the hiring for open positions across the district. There's really only a handful of teacher openings and long-term substitute openings left to fill, and most are in the interview or final selection process. So a couple of them, I think, have been filled in the last couple of days. So this is probably the best we've done, I'd say in six or seven years when we really started hiring en masse. We have a number. We have a number of assistant positions open, which will be, the year real assistants and teaching assistants and, uh, which will be filling probably throughout the month of August. That is always a moving target a little bit. Stacy Middle School is wrapping up the process for the open assistant principal position, likely, I think it's gonna be early next week when they wrap it up, but they're, they're very close to wrapping that up, which will be the last of the mystery of the year. So I think we've got probably a handful of teaching and long-term subs left, which have close to done. And, you know, we, we get a lot of movement with the assistants over the summer. So we've got a number of openings, but that's expected, and we're not particularly worried about that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So Kevin, sorry, like approximate total openings currently, five, fifty?
Uh, you know, including assistants, it's probably like twenty-ish. I'd say like, there's probably like five to, there's probably less than that now because when I last got it, it was like about seven or eight.
Hundred percent changing by the day?
It's about half.
Okay.
Like, like every year, though, we're probably gonna have a late, two to five to six, um, resignations, which always happens. And, you know, we're ready to deal with that. You know, as you know, and I've, I've been preaching, um, the hiring landscape has changed dramatically. There's just not as many people going into education. We're trying to leverage as many programs to, you know, build our own pathways for assistance in the teaching, and we're very aggressive on the recruiting front. But, um, you know, it's, you know, same thing's happening with the police forces, there's, everything teaching, people just aren't going into it like they used to.
Got it. For the open classroom teachers currently, do you feel highly confident we'll have all those?
Yes, I think we're very close to, you know, very close to wrapping it up.
Okay.
And it might be like one or two as of like tonight.
Got it. Tightened to that, do you happen to have K enrollment? Just curious if we have the right number of teachers slot?
Yeah, we're, we're in good shape there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're actually in very good shape there. Now, there's been changes to, I don't know if people have been following this, but there's been changes to the shelter law at the state or how the, how the state is approaching the shelter. That could impact enrollment this year because we could have more students where they were kind of spread out across the state. We could see an influx coming into Milford potentially. Now, we may not do, but I just want to throw that out there. So, but right now, like we're, we're, we're class size, we're great. I think we have like one grade level where, but it's still good. Like it's not, you know, again, if we get sixty or seventy new students, it's a probably a grade level, but like across the board, we're, we're doing very, very well.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll give that update in September, just in terms of like average class size and numbers and things, because we'll have better sense then, there's a lot of movement in August anyways.
Yeah, um, just out of curiosity, the job fairs that we've hosted a few times throughout the year, are you seeing people from those job fairs getting hired or applying for jobs here? Just was curious to see how successful those are for us individually.
We've actually hired people on spot.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so, um, we've done a really good job. We may do another one in August, depending on where we are in the process, but.
Sorry, I was just mentioning that John at the AC just kicked on.
It's the two, it's the two guys from the month that's starting.
We're finally cooling off and being here for two hours.
It's good that colleges have the previous meeting for media feedback. Yes, so they've been very effective.
Awesome.
Um, I would say for assistants and jobs like custodians, calf workers, they're fantastic. We have grabbed a couple, like, you know, teachers and other staff members, but, you know, we, we go to all the college ones. We develop great relationships with professors. Um, Lisa Kincaid has really established like a great internship program for counselors. So that's brought a lot of great people in, and we're seeing more, um, student-teacher relationships, which are critical because if someone is decent, we, we scoop them up if we have an opening, so will other districts.
Great, awesome, thank you.
Yep. If I could say one more thing, the trend is almost like what's happening in business where like the paid internship is becoming more of a thing in education. So we're gonna probably be looking at that a little bit from a budget perspective to see, because some, some schools are offering like, you pay the person, you can pay like an assistant. So it's, it's something, it's something we'll look at. I mean, it's, a couple of years ago would have been great, tight budget years, it's a little more challenging, but it's, it's a concept that's key and mental.
Yes, going back to, to Megan's point, you know, in, in the number of roles that we have available, we have, you know, there's different tiers, right? There's, there are central office staff, there are principals, and there, and there are, you know, as Mike always says, our direct labor. There are a few key positions.
Rick Mulholland, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, exactly. That's a, that's a Mike term, I like it. There were cer, a few, uh, director positions that we're looking to fill, SEL directors, all that.
Yep.
Last I spoke with you, it was on the cusp of, of coming together.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, Stacy Colson has been hired as the SEL director, I sent the committee to know on that. Um, obviously, Wayne is sitting here, so it's ready for big moments coming up. Uh, Dave McGovern, I keep, I keep calling him McGovern.
Yeah, and when we look at that, so right now, our, our, our director needs have been met, right? And we're looking for, again, back to Mike's, it's that, it's that direct layer where that's, that's where our key focus is right now from a hiring standpoint.
Correct. We've, we've got one administrative position that I think is gonna wrap up, I think, in the next couple of days, the assistant principal stays there. And we're in the best position we've been in in at least half a decade, cut, going into the first week of August in terms of where we are with teachers.
Yep.
Um, assistants, I'd say we're pretty close to where we typically are, which is not bad.
Yeah, okay. And I know a year ago, we added on the kindergarten position because we knew that numbers were, were increasing, that we're still seeing that same enrollment numbers that re.
That, that is still a necessary position.
A necessary position.
Yeah, correct.
Good, all right. All right, on to the report of the school business administrator.
So, so before Wayne jumps in, I'm gonna say two things. One is, this is our first meeting, so be gentle. I told you guys we're generally very good with Kathy. Number two, I just want to reiterate, I'm gonna keep saying this like a broken record, it's gonna be another one of my mantras, this isn't a good mantra, is this is gonna be an incredibly tight budget year and incredibly challenging. And we knew that in the spring, we knew it in the summer, we're gonna, we're gonna feel it in the fall. It's one of the messages I'm gonna be driving home to all of our directors, our principals, and our, and our educators, I'm gonna talk about it, just say, you know, wherever we can be, you know, flugal, we can conserve resources. We can be, um, you know, creative in some cases, we're gonna need to be because, uh, as you know, anything and everything willing does happen in a public school system our size. And so do a lot of unexpected, um, costs that can come up. And we're probably in our worst position to address those unexpected costs than we've been in my twelve years. Like, I, I'm very, very nervous going into this year from a financial perspective because of the cuts that we made. Now, we're able to keep all our personnel, we're able to keep the same level of service. What we don't have is flexibility to address like a boiler going down, a student moving in who's an expensive out-of-displacement. An increase of, you know, a hundred and twenty McKinney-Bento students or, you know, immigrant students. Um, we're gonna have challenges to kind of, like, we've been able to finagle a lot of those things in the past, and our ability to do that is gonna be, is gonna be very compromised. Now, one last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Wayne, I said two, when we're gonna say three things, is, um, she's been off to a amazing start. Um, she's done a great job of reaching out to our principals, our directors, starting to build relationships. Um, so she's meeting, I, you know, I'd say she's probably about what, half or two-thirds of the way through meetings?
Most of them.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we've been, Craig, her and I have been checking in on a regular basis. And, you know, it takes a little while to get your sea legs up, I think, because, you know, how we do things is different than how Wellesley or Blackstone Millville or Worcester does things. And there's like traditions and processes that are different. Excuse me. But I'm, I'm confident that she will embrace the things that we're doing well and make recommendations for improvements so we can improve the process. But she's, she's off to a fantastic start. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Wayne.
Okay.
No pressure.
Um, I would like to first seek a vote to approve the warrants. There are seven warrants with the total of one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seven cents.
Motion by Megan?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Second.
Go ahead. Second by Michael?
Discussion.
Um, I was just going through, I just saw the final site, the website.
Yep.
It's a big bill. Um, have we signed off on it, like have they provided their services?
So we're still in process, still in process, but we're confident that they're, they're gonna work there with us.
Okay, yeah, I just saw the bill here, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, so we've, we've asked all our department heads and building principals to have their website content buttoned up by tomorrow. Um, Tim and Kevin will kind of get it where it needs to go, and then we'll probably have a soft launch in the next couple of weeks, and then if they launch, it'll be in the school year.
Great, yeah, I, I didn't mean our site, because that's, the content's our, our problem, I just wanna make sure the company is providing.
No, they've been providing, they've been providing like support, resources, and we've had kind of, the company's shifted a little bit, but we've had a longstanding relationship with them, through the Blackboard project as well.
Okay, what's the number? Thirty grand. Okay, so it's, it's a full pin.
Yeah, and that's what I thought, I just wanted to share too, that we discussed this, and when Blackboard became the final site, uh, part of it was, um, that they weren't gonna charge us for that website change. But that is what we've been paying for our old website too, so it's just another, um.
Annual fee or something.
Another year of them hosting our stuff, and it's good to know we're getting.
As, as well as the communication system used for their calls.
Yes, that is working.
That you get when it's, it's snowing out. Or as I like to refer to it, inclement weather.
Any other discussion? Seen on Zlada, a motion by Megan and a second by Michael, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Okay, um, so I just wanna give a quick update, um, since, like, for, uh, what I did since I started. Um, so as Dr. McIntyre said, I have been, um, had one-to-one meetings with the principals and I toured the schools. And, um, I, um, I also met the department leaders individually and talked about their needs, their concerns, and of course, make sure the message is well-delivered about the budget. Um, and, uh, we had a brief meeting with the town officials. We, we went and said hi, said hi, and, uh, a meeting, official meeting will be set for, for, uh, August. And we have a meeting coming up, uh, the end of July with the HR department, uh, on the town side. Um, I've met, uh, Mr. Moody, and, um, I've also met, uh, Vendetti's, uh, our yellow bus vendor. Um, so we have been, uh, reviewing the job postings and the hiring recommendations together, and, uh, we've read through the budgets. Um, so, uh, overall, I just, everyone was so, so helpful and, um, provide a lot of valuable information and, um, very welcoming. So that's a good, good start of my role.
Um, thank you. So, um, you just mentioned Vendetti, so I believe their contract's coming up for Noel, I think, in, in next year or so.
Yeah, another year.
Yeah, so a, a, as that's getting closer, it'd be great if you start thinking about, you know, um, uh, what our transportation should look like in the future. Like, we've had a lot of talks, because obviously the transportation's been ballooned, and, um, I think that's a huge focus area for us as a committee. So since we know the RFP is gonna go out at some point, we should probably start thinking about what do we need.
Do you need to run that one, put that on the next agenda item?
Hmm?
Can you add that to next agenda items?
Sure, you can, or you get it.
Yeah, so that, 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 it's very important to us right now because it's just the cost, so we wanna get ahead of that RFP, so.
Okay, so, um, the RFP won't come out this year, but next year.
I think so.
But, but this is a good time to start to think about it.
Yes, correct, yeah, yeah, because the, the cost went way up, so.
Yeah, we're in the first year of a two-year rule over the, the three-year contract.
That's right, okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you for that update.
Okay. Um, so the personnel updates is, uh, linked in the packet, um, just for your information. And, uh, the next i, item, uh, I would like to, uh, seek a vote, um, to declare the following items as surplus.
Okay, um, the surplus, you know, I'll read, I'll read the surplus list that says surplus books. It's a couple of things, I'm gonna read them all at once, we can try to do all of these in one vote. So, um, the surplus is French books at Stacy Middle School, Algebra One and in Grade Eight and Milford High School, Technology E-Waste and ELA at Stacy Middle School. Are there any questions?
Just a quick question. What do we, so I'm thinking about just the books at Stacy, what do we do with the surplus? I'm just curious about that.
There's, sometimes there's vendors, like E-Waste, there's, I think, there's a, there's a vendor that picks it up for us. Um, sometimes there's organizations that pick up books and they transfer them to like other places in the world, um, because they're more desperate for supplies than we do. And sometimes we just, if they're really in bad shape or it's garbage, we just recycle.
The only reason I brought it up, I was just looking at the lesson I just saw, there is a good amount of novels from Stacy. So just, you know, I know like before I've mentioned trying to put books in the hands of people, even if, I don't, I don't know technically what we need to do, but donating them to the library or even to our own students to take home. I'd rather see that than them being thrown out if they are usable, so I just thought I'd put that out there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look at that.
Any, any other thoughts, questions?
None.
No? All right, seen none, all right, is there a motion to include all four of those areas of surplus? Sorry, can I get a motion to mark all four of those areas as surplus, please?
So moved.
Motion by Chris? Second by Michael? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to, um, request an, uh, vote on, um, approving the out-of-state travel request from our reading, uh, for our curriculum leader, Carol Sberski, to attend a reading league conference out of state.
Motion to approve out-of-state travel. Motion by Michael. Second by Megan, any discussion?
Um, Kevin, this is good for you?
Yeah, yeah.
This is a good conference that is kind of.
Yeah, and you know what, the science of reading is such a big thing, that the more like insight, particularly our leader and leader of literacy can, can take in, I think it's gonna just benefit the whole district.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seen nothing further, I got the motion by Michael, I lost it, the second one's for that, Megan? Thank you. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so we won't have, we don't have any gifts or new grants to approve today?
Fantastic, all right, thank you for the update. So bring us to subcommittee updates. I have one from facilities, does anybody have anything else? I'll let you guys go first, no? Um, all right, so facilities did not meet, um, officially in person, but we did get an update via, um, email, I believe, from Dr. McIntyre that earlier this week, there were two representatives from Aries Building over at Brookside with Carlos. And they appeared apparently to address open punchless items, and they will be working on a timeline with Carlos to have those finalized.
It was, it was, um, sort of like encouraging that the person who came from Aries followed up the next day instead of giving, giving back to us with timelines once they connected with subcontractors. So Carlos is on it, and I think, um, I'm gonna be cautiously optimistic. But I think they wanna wrap the project up, and that's the sense I got from it. It's been, it's been almost a year, so hopefully we, uh, the two people I know yesterday were, seemed very responsive and very good.
And we still have final payment outstanding, correct? So I'm sure that's motivating them.
Yeah, it's fifty, fifty thousand, this is why they came out.
Amazing how that works, huh? Um, quickly then, too, that, uh, that punch list has been approved by both parties at this point?
Correct.
Okay, great.
And I, and I think Vicki had one additional piece that, um, something to do with the closet doors that we, we added to it that was not in the original.
Okay, great.
From what I see, it was a, a fourth maybe, that was the only difference. Do you have anything else?
Yep.
They acknowledged the pictures and those, the, the agreement. I appear to be agreeing.
There's no other, uh, subcommittee updates, so we will move on to future agenda items. It's a bit run by not adding any on, but I have a feeling there's some coming.
I'll start then.
Go ahead.
Uh, we talked about, yeah, so the website, just an update on where we're at and where we're going. Uh, transportation, you know, where we're at and, and kind of where we're going, and really looking at where we started budget-wise last year and how much we needed to transfer and what, you know, that we, I know that we added additional costs. So, so it just might be a, almost like a rolling agenda item to keep track of it, so we're aware of it more than I think. And then, yeah, I guess just quickly, you know, in FY twenty-four, just the, a budget review and where some of the key transfers were. We know that transportation was one of those key transfers, whether others, and, you know, I know that we, we go through them, uh, but more to just kind of highlight all the different ones. We, we kind of go through them as needed throughout the year, so let's just do one summative process so we can see that. And then the last one would be the status of the MHS roof and where we're going with that. I know we talked, we talked about engaging in a, um, in a warranty, or in, I guess, what are our next steps as, as the age of this building continues? But we are in the, uh, the process of, of updating it. That's it.
Excellent, um, I'll just comment on one, two pieces. Um, we'll probably try to schedule a facilities subcommittee for maybe later in August or early September to try to catch up on a couple of pieces there. Uh, I think the group discussion is good because I have it on my, on my checklist here too. And then in terms of the transportation update, I know that I shared a meeting, a few meetings ago, that Michael and I sat with the group to get more information on the budgetary aspect. And I don't recall if I did share or not, but one of the things that came out of the discussion was that the team was going to, um, try their best to get a. was that the team was going to try their best to get a better projection of numbers as we get closer to the end of, I think it was August, when they had more of an idea of what some of the transportations can look like, especially with the homeless population. So I do plan on, as you said, getting transportation in here, not just to give an update on where we're going, but the update that Michael and I heard financially, I think, would be a very important piece for everyone here to understand, so that we can have a better view of what we have to do going forward. So that will be on something soon as well. Anyone else? No, okay. So I have two things on my list. I'll share the first one, obviously, we just wrapped up the twenty-three, twenty-four goals. So my plan probably at the next meeting is to come with an outline of how we're going to approach setting the goals for twenty-four, twenty-five. So obviously, Dr. McIntyre comes with his thoughts and recommendations, and I have some ideas about how we can do this and maybe clarify and position some of these things a little more clearly for everybody so that we can set up some benchmarks maybe and something that we can revisit, you know, halfway through the year and then for next year. And then the other piece that I'm going to add that we'll be talking about, and there's been some discussion about, I believe, Robin, you brought up, well, what we talk about when and why we do it. So I did get the guiding document from Melissa, who I think has probably had this for a long time of when she puts things on the agendas. And my goal from that, something that I took away from M A S C, was to create what's considered a year-long agenda, which is basically us sitting down and saying, with what she has, with what the strategic plan says, with what the superintendent's goals are, here's what we're gonna talk about each month and have something that we can focus on and kind of use as our guide for the next, for the next school year. So I'm hoping to have some concept of that for us to talk about, see if we want to adopt that. So those were my two pieces.
I forgot to mention, I think we know this, next meeting and obvious, we should talk about the education plan for the MSBA.
Yes.
I also promised it to the school building committee today, so we probably should do it.
I do have that on my list, yep, and.
There were a lot of questions tonight, so I, we invited all of them, you know, if they want to attend. So I think we can start talking about it.
Very good. And I believe you said that Dr. Al would be here to help us with that? Very good.
Yeah, well, he's the expert on it.
Yeah. All right. So that concludes future agenda items, which brings us to adjournment. So we'll proceed with ending the open session of our meeting tonight. There is executive session scheduled for two topics of discussion. The first one discussing the superintendent's contract, and the second being a review of an M T A grievance. We will not be returning to open session tonight, so I will start a roll call vote over with Brendan.
Yes.
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 I'm also a yes, that is unanimous. Thank you very much, and you're next.